I feel short, but I'm.
Alright, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. We are a minute behind schedule already, so I apologize. But I appreciate everybody being here today. Should be a good meeting. First thing we're gonna do is I want to introduce Springdale High School senior Marcos Cisneros to come up and lead the pledge for us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, stay right there. Okay, so this, this is Marcos Cisneros. Hope I'm saying that right. He's a senior at Springdale High School. He started in the Springdale School District way back in pre-K, so he's been with us for many years. He attended Parson Hills through 4th grade and finished up elementary at Turbo and is a Spartan and a Golden Eagle. He's enrolled in the IB program. He's a member of the BIT Academy, Student Council, Skills USA, and the Springdale High School Choir. Outside of school, Marcos is involved in Upper Bound and One Community. He enjoys spending time with family and friends focusing on fitness and watching sports such as football, MMA, basketball, and soccer. Here's, here's a really cool fact right here. Marcos received a full four-year scholarship to Notre Dame. He got that through Quest Bridge National College Match, so awesome. That's great. What do you have for us today?
Well, I'm here to kind of basically represent myself as a member of the Quest Bridge finals program. Basically, Quest Bridge is a nonprofit organization that I earned that scholarship through. So basically through application, it was a difficult process as I had it, it was kind of just a waiting game and then I had to go back to it. When I found out I was finalist, I then had to go back to work again immediately just to rank the colleges. So the college that I matched with Notre Dame was ranked third on my list, so it was definitely one of those that I wanted to go study at. The major I wanted to study was computer science. The day that I found out, I was definitely in shock and I just, I was just not, I just could not believe what had just happened. But it's definitely just, it's definitely a big change in my life because now I don't have to worry about my parents having to work for me to pay tuition whatsoever. And I just hope that from that scholarship I return not only just that they don't have to pay for my fees, tuition, but that after my studies I can definitely return more to them. So just wanted to represent Springdale High School. I definitely want to thank my parents, teachers, and staff. Definitely also the principals at Springdale, especially Mr. Jones. It's just definitely an honor to be here and I'm thankful to represent Springdale High School here.
Fantastic. Board, does anybody have any questions for Marcos?
What interests you about computer science?
At a young age, I'd say around eight or nine years old, my dad was able to afford a laptop for me to kind of just use or for, basically for the whole family to use in the house. And at some point, it just started to kind of get through these difficult problems and it was just, even the smallest problems, I was able to fix with it. And so just kind of like even being able to solve the problems with a computer kind of maybe kind of find my passion for not just troubleshooting computers, but also like figuring out like what computer science, the field itself is. And so slowly throughout junior high, I started to gain an interest more. And then high school when I entered Springdale, I joined the BIT Academy and then that's when I would gain more of a passion for the computer science field. So I just take courses and right now I'm even enrolled in the IB Computer Science course. And so I'm going to continue to study that. It's definitely one passion of mine that I want to continue following through college.
Fantastic. What were some of the other schools you were interested in?
On top of my list was Stanford, Duke. There's also Vanderbilt, Yale. Let's see. There was also Brown and Boston.
Some real lightweights.
Yeah, these were universities I helped to get. And I mean, for me, it was just that if I matched to one, I would be happy, as happy as ever, because I mean, it's, it's a full ride to a prestigious college. And I mean, I'm getting the best of what I can for, from my field. And so I know it's gonna be a challenge to study at Notre Dame, but that's what I want because I know that's what's gonna be best for me.
That'll be great.
Thank you.
Have you scheduled any visits yet?
I plan to schedule a visit hopefully this semester. I want, the first visit, I definitely want to take my parents with me because I know that they've been wanting to see how the university is. And then I'm going to attend the story orientation in April so I can get a kind of glimpse of how it is and to connect with students. And then hopefully, once I arrive at the university to study, I could connect with my Quest Bridge peers as well because those are the ones who also earned it. So I definitely want to make connections with them.
And I'm sure you know Ms. Higginite's son went to Notre Dame?
Yes.
So that'd probably be a good guy to hook up with, get a lay of the land.
Yeah, I heard about that when I got matched and I was like, hmm. So.
Good.
Is your family here?
Yes, my family is here.
Mom and dad? Wave. There we go. There we go. That's awesome. Is there anything else, Board? Well, we really appreciate you being here. We look forward to maybe you coming back in a couple, two, three years and kind of give us an update on how things are going at Notre Dame.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our agenda. Do we need to make any changes? Okay, so the agenda is gonna stand as submitted.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Cook, a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that brings us to the consent agenda, which includes our meetings from last meeting, our minutes from the last meeting, the transfers, and there's a report on our school board training hours. So if any of y'all have any questions about that, that's in, in there. Do we have any questions about any of those items? Okay. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Ramus and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm gonna hand it off to Dr. Cleveland. He's got several things that are gonna be really fun to talk about here.
Absolutely.
Go for it. I'd like to invite Dr. Greve and Coach Stellic to the podium too, maybe even Betsy if you'd like to come, our assistant athletic director. Betsy, would you come? We have an introduction of a gentleman this evening and his wife that I'd like for Dr. Greve and Coach Stellic both to maybe say a couple of things prior to introducing Coach Eckley.
With Dr. Cleveland and Board, we're excited to introduce our new head coach, Coach Eckley, tonight. Been able to visit quite a bit together and just firmly believe that he's gonna be the right choice to lead our football program. He met with our athletes this morning and, and again, it was just really exciting for our kids and exciting for our program. So anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to, to introduce our new head coach tonight.
Coach?
Thank you. I certainly appreciate it. Appreciate the, the opportunity at this position. It's also kind of a hard act to follow. If you saw my resume, Notre Dame's not on there. Congratulations to you. Well, I'm excited to get to work. It's gonna be a lot of travel, a lot of work, I know, but I'm excited about the opportunity. It's, the kids got a chance to see them this morning and they're awesome. Good workers, good attitude. Assistant coaches have done a great job so far. I'm super pleased. Thank you guys for giving me a vote of support. Any questions you guys have for me?
Well, I just wanted to publicly say that I thought Coach Eckley was the best of the two Eckleys until I met his wife and realized Coach Eckley's wife is really the best of the two.
My wife Shereen.
Yeah, there's no, there's no doubt. It's-
Would you like to introduce her?
My wife Shereen and, and she's in charge.
We're happy to be here.
Board, do you have any questions of Coach Eckley? We're just glad you're here. We look forward to what you got to bring this upcoming football season. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I thought for sure I'd get some X's and O's questions.
We're gonna give you a pass right now, but we may come back.
It's coming though.
Yeah, good.
You're about to get swept away, right?
Yes, sir.
I didn't want to interrupt any other board members' questions, but I hope you enjoy meeting.
Go have fun.
So you'll be on campus?
The goal is we'll be here just a couple days this week and moving forward then, we're, I'm hopeful that I'll be able to be here Tuesday night through, through Friday, some days, some weeks into Saturday. So we'll be here three or four days a week is the goal. We'll see how I sleep away from home, but-
You gotta finish contracting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Officially be on our contract, so I won.
So I won.
Yeah, so the, the goal is, again, to be here at least three or four days a week. And then we'll get here probably officially, like we'll move all our stuff probably 20, 20, 25th of May is the goal.
And you just became a grandfather again?
Yeah, just, just had a, just had another granddaughter. That's our number, number four. And we've got, our five is, is on the way in August, so, so it's-
So you're going to make your table that will ask you the real questions?
Good, good.
You're bored.
Looking forward to it. Yeah, exactly.
It's in the car.
I know everybody's really excited.
Good, I'm glad. I'm glad. I'm, I'm excited as well. I'm just ready to get to work.
Appreciate you taking time out of your day to come to see us and, and enjoy your, your little get-together.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Thanks so much. Have a great night.
I want to introduce Ms. Tisher. Recognition of the Arkansas Civil Literacy Achievements. I think we have some students here, maybe?
Good evening, Board, and Happy New Year. Glad to see all of you. So first, I would like to give you an update on the fall achievements for the Arkansas Seal of Bili literacy. And I just want to give you a little bit of context before I go into the results. So adopted first by California in 2011, the Seal of Bili literacy is now recognized in 49 states and Washington DC. According to the official website, the Seal of Bili literacy encourages students to pursue bili literacy, honors the skills of our, honors the skills our students attained, and can be evidence of skills that are attractive to future employers and college admissions offices. So Arkansas piloted the Arkansas Seal of Bili literacy program in 2017. And since then, a total of 3,650 students from 86 high schools in Arkansas have attained this certification across 22 languages other than English. And so the Arkansas Seal of Bili literacy is awarded each fall and each spring to students in grades, in grades nine through 12. And so I would like to give you an update this evening on the fall report. So for fall of 2022, you can see that Springdale Public Schools, 111 students received the Arkansas Seal of Bili literacy. At Don Tyson School of Innovation, there were 18 students. All students achieved the seal in Spanish. Harbor High School, you'll see there that they had 20 students. They had four students who sealed in Chinese. Three students who sealed in Chinese and Vietnamese. One student in French, one student in Marshallese, and two in Spanish. And of all the high schools in the state of Arkansas, Harbor High School had the most diverse representation of languages this season with five languages other than English. And then Springdale High School with a whopping 73 students achieving the Seal of Bili literacy. Eight of those students in Marshallese and 65 of those students in Spanish. Springdale Public Schools to date still holds the record of the most certified students. We are now up to 1,181 students with the Seal of Bili literacy. And so we are incredibly proud of our students and of our teaching staff and our principals. And we just cannot say enough about how this attributes to our students' lives beyond high school. And so we're very proud of them. We will have another update in spring, and so we look forward to that data. So if we can give all those students and teachers a round of applause. Okay, the next item that I have for you this evening is the recognition of Quest Bridge matched finalists. And I know you already had the pleasure of meeting Marcos. We have two other matched finalists in the house with us this evening. And I will call all of them up to meet you in just a moment. First, I want to tell you just a little bit more about Quest Bridge. Because the magnitude of what these three students has achieved, I want you to fully, fully, fully understand the magnitude of this. So Quest Bridge was originally created, this whole process, for students who feel the nation's best colleges are financially out of reach. And so this program revolves around matching students to the top 50 colleges across the nation. Matched scholarship recipients are granted early admission and they get a full four-year ride. Each of these students' awards were over $300,000. So when Marcos was standing in front of you, his award was $320,000. Okay? The beautiful thing about these financial aid packages, it includes tuition and fees, room and board, books and supplies, and travel expenses. All match scholarship packages have no parental contribution, no student loans, and they may contain a student contribution in the form of federal work, study, summer work, or student savings. And so I just want to give you like some context to the number of applicants. So this year, there were 17,900 applicants. 5,613 of those students were chosen as finalists. And of that 5,613, only 1,600 were matched and awarded. And we have three in Springdale. And so I would like to call Marcos back up and Luis and Joshua. You guys will come up? So first, I'm gonna let Marcos step back up and I'm gonna flash his beautiful picture of him holding his Notre Dame sign. And then we will go to Luis and then to Joshua. And Luis and Joshua both attend Harbor High School. And then I'll flash each of their pictures when they stand up. Marcos, if you want to come on back up?
Thank you. So as I, as I mentioned previously, when I found out about Quest Bridge, I found out through basically the last year's winner who got it was Karen Delgado. And so that motivated me to apply for myself this school year. And so I started the application around September. Around October, I had to submit it. And then a few, a few weeks later, I would find out that I was a finalist. And so then after that, I had to get rolling back to the process again of applying to all the 15 colleges that I ranked. So that would mean that I had to just kind of spend about each night about three to four applications completings. And so then a month would, a month later in December, during just kind of one of my classes, got an email that my staff was ready. And then I was just, when I found that congratulations screen, I was just like, I just, I could not believe it. I mean, it's, it's a blessing. I mean, to get a scholarship to go to a prestigious university, I mean, I, I was never expecting it. I mean, the, the plan I had, like if I wasn't going to match, was go to go, go somewhere and stay, hopefully get some scholarships. But with this, I mean, my life's been changed. I mean, I don't have to worry about my parents having to contribute financially to my tuition because that's the last thing I wanted to do is get money out of their pockets just so I can go study. I'm happy that I have this scholarship for me and that all of my expenses are covered. And so it is an honor to get this scholarship and I'm just, want to thank everyone again. My school, Springdale, my family as well for supporting me throughout this, and also my close friends of mine. It's definitely an honor to receive a scholarship and I'm happy that we also have two other recipients that received this as well.
Hi, I'm Luis. I really like how Ms. Tisher emphasized just how amazing an opportunity this is. I heard about the Quest Bridge through my six, my sister actually. She went through the whole process and she became a finalist, but she didn't get matched. So I can kind of hold her, hold that over during dinner, which I kind of like. But yeah, it, it really is an amazing opportunity. I was really having doubts when I was, I was applying because I'm like, these are top colleges. I don't know if I can get in. But having that just support system at school, being like, yes, you can do it. And especially seeing like other scholars from Quest Bridge, that they did it. It was really inspiring. And I really love that. It helped me get through the process. And yeah, I matched with Boston University, which is crazy. It, it's a really great opportunity. I remember when the matches came out and they came out at 1:00, but I told my mom I'd wait for her to see and open it with her. And I thought she was gonna be the only one there, but then my sister came, my brother. Basically, the whole family was there. And I was like, I better, I better get matched. Yeah. So I opened the laptop, I signed in, and it says matched. And then my mom's going crazy, I'm going crazy. And it's just, it was such an amazing thing. And my mom, she's going crazy, but then she, she realized, she's like, you're going away! No! It was, yeah, it was, it was something. So I just want to say thank you to just all my teachers, everyone. Unfortunately, my mom couldn't make it, but thank you to her just for raising me the way I am. And it's, it's just really an amazing opportunity and I really want to thank Quest Bridge as well. Because now I don't gotta, I don't gotta worry about nothing about that no more. I'm, I know I want to study engineering, but I'm not sure if I want to study electrical or mechanical yet, but yeah.
Was Boston your first choice or was?
No, it was, it was my third choice, but honestly, I was fine with getting into any of the schools. Yeah, they were all like neck and neck, but it was just like, ah, this place got nice weather, this one doesn't. But yeah, they were all really good options. Yeah, I loved it.
So have you visited yet?
Uh, no, I have not. I have not visited yet, but I, I think I'm gonna go visit during spring break.
Have you ever been up there at all?
Oh, I haven't. But it's crazy. They had like a Zoom for this and I was like, I'm going from Springdale to Boston. That's gonna be a big change. I'm kind of scared. But then this guy, he, he was, he's from Alaska, an island that only has 1,000 people. I'm like, at least I'm not as, as bad, I'm not as-
Not gonna last.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not gonna last. I know some people.
Boston's a great area. There's a lot of American history there and it's just-
Yeah, I know. I'm so excited.
You'll have a good time. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Josh Shields and I matched to Duke University. I'm just thankful to have this opportunity. It was definitely a blessing. I always knew that I wanted to go to a top institution, but I never really knew how I was gonna be able to afford it. And this just provided that bridge. And I'm just thankful to have it. And I'd like to say thank you to my mom, she's here, to all my teachers. A special shout out to Mr. Fink, my math teacher. But yeah, I'm just glad to have this opportunity. And I'm thinking about studying civil and environmental engineering.
You like basketball?
Uh, not really. I play soccer, but I'll be going to-
Okay. Well, congratulations.
So what's the, anybody can answer, Ms. Tisher, what's the application process look like?
It's, it's very extensive. It's very demanding and it's filled with a lot of, a lot of blood, sweat, and tears, I guess. But the first application is just trying to become a finalist. And that consists of two essays, one 800-word and then one 500-word. And then two small essays and then just a bunch of little questions. And then once you become a finalist, you have to apply to a bunch of schools. Yeah.
Just their normal application process?
Yeah, just the supplemental essays. And then it's just waiting. Yeah, it was a lot. It was definitely a lot.
Pretty good return on your investment. You get a $300,000 scholarship for all that time you put in. That's awesome.
It was definitely a lot of work.
Do you want to have your mom stand up?
Yes.
Great job. Good luck. You guys all need to come back in a couple years and report to us how everything's going, alright?
Just come back and live in Arkansas. We don't need the brains. We need the smart ass.
Okay, and that is my portion. Thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Tisher. Well, Ms. Justin, as you know, that this is Arkansas School Board Appreciation Month and I believe the governor's written personal notes to you. Is that right? Not to me, but yes. January is State School Board, Arkansas School Board Member Recognition Month. And as, as he's done the last several years, Governor Hutchinson has done a proclamation. And I'm not gonna read this thing. It is a page long and you don't need to listen to me read that. If you guys want to see it, I'm happy to pass it down to you. I just want to say thanks to all of y'all for, for being on this board and making things much easier than it is in some places. It's been a pleasure to serve with y'all and to continue to serve with y'all, so.
Did y'all get the note about the pay raise?
Yeah, we're gonna double your pay. Every year we do that. So anyway, that's, that's that. So the interesting thing is we've got Ms. Jones here with a special, special something for you.
Thank you, Dr. Cleveland, Leanne, and School Board. We are very thankful for your service to our community, to our school district, to our kids, our employees. And we wanted to do something nice for you to recognize. And so we made a plaque for each one of you from the gym floor at the auxiliary gym at Springdale High School. So I want to give a shout out to Becca Wallace. She's the Head Engineer and Architecture Academy teacher. Alex Kearney, and he's an intern at the U of A, and Bailey Jones at East. They put this together for you. And so I'll just hand these out and just know that it's a token of our appreciation for everything that you do. And we hope you like them. When I got them, I was like, this is awesome. So anyway, hope you like it and thank you and thank you, sir.
Pass it out, select and show them all.
There you go, sir.
I literally bled on that floor. That is awesome.
And some new gravis on the back too to kind of tell the story about it. This may be the coolest thing you've ever given us.
It's hard to be a bulldog either.
That's right.
I thought you were gonna say it's cruise, but this is pretty cool.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your hard work. And thank them all, please, because this is really, really cool. Does the board have time for a quick photo on the steps with all the plaques?
Yeah, we can do that.
That is the floor, yes, for sure.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Cleveland. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Justin Spoke, Principal- At this time, I would like to invite, uh, Mr. Justin Swope, Principal at George Elementary and Ms. Kelly Bortz, Principal at Don Tyson School of Innovation, to join me at the podium. I'm going to, um, tell you a little bit about what it takes to become and what it means to become a highly, um, effective school, be accredited as a highly effective school. Um, highly effective schools accreditation validates the high quality of work being done across school communities. It also aligns school improvement efforts for the professional learning community process and the high reliability school model. It assists school leadership teams to align their school improvement efforts as well as identify implementation gaps and develop growth area action plans. In addition, schools receive formal assessment and evaluation of their progress. The accreditation communicates the school's commitment to quality, to community stakeholders and to parents. And this is not an easy process. Um, schools have to submit their applications, they get a lot of feedback, and then they have to make revisions to their application and resubmit it. Um, once it has been reviewed, then, um, it is determined whether or not they're accredited and once they're accredited, um, then they have to maintain that accreditation. So I'm very, very happy to announce to, or to, uh, present to you tonight, these two amazing school principals that have led their schools to become highly effective accredited schools. So Board, if you have any questions, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Swope and Ms. Bortz.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You have any questions?
It's okay if you don't. I mean, I don't, I mean, that is, it's pretty damn awesome, obviously, but.
I guess tell us what it means to you.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I think that for, for us, when we looked at the process of going through the accreditation, um, so much of the work that we do in Springdale, like we were already doing the required elements and it really looked at, um, the alignment of your strategic action plan with the PLC model, professional learning community. Um, and so I felt like that the work, the focus work that we've been doing really put us on the path for accreditation. So when we submitted, um, our strategic action plan, really a lot of positives feedback too, because we were already, you know, doing so much of the work that we're looking for. Um, and I just, you know, really look at our CNI team and the organizational focus, you know, starting, um, with our district leadership and Dr. Cleveland was already focused on those things. So the process, you know, there was a lot to it and I want to recognize Mr. Dophie, um, in my building who really kind of led a lot of this. You know, it was just, um, validation and confirmation of the work we're doing here in Springdale.
That's the word I would use is validation. Going through this process, uh, was really, um, just, uh, an opportunity for us to showcase the hard work of our students, the hard work of our teachers, uh, but the planning process as well. Um, Robin Dawson, uh, works for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed and she supports George Elementary, uh, in our PLC work. Uh, and we've been working with her for about a year and a half now. Uh, she said, she called me at the beginning of the, the window for applying for, for highly effective schools accreditation. She said, Justin, y'all are already doing the work, you might as well have the recognition for it. Um, and, and I have to point back like you did, uh, to the, uh, the strategic action plan process that our district leadership has, uh, really, um, led us through in, in the last two years especially. Uh, we've made some significant changes in that strategic action plan process. Uh, and it has been a, a shift from a compliance document to the work that we do every day. And I truly, um, for the first time in my career, and I've, I've been a principal here in, in Springdale or assistant principal with her for close to twenty years now, uh, that, that strategic action plan process is, was largely just that state compliance document that we had to do. Um, and oftentimes, you, you know, it didn't reflect some of the things that we were doing on a, on a daily basis. I can point to you everything that's in our strategic action plan, I can tell you where it's happening each day. And when I'm looking at what next steps I have to do, I'm pulling out that strategic action plan. It's truly a living document. Um, and it was a validation of the work that our, our curriculum and instruction team has really done a good job leading us through. So, um, validation would be the word I've, I've jumped on with.
So once you received this rec, uh, this recognition, is it something that you have forever or do you have to reapply after so many years or how does it work?
It is something we, we do have to, to reapply. It, it's maintenance of it. Uh, and so there will be this ongoing look at the plan, uh, but it's also kind of the, the next step or the, the first step to, um, leading towards high reliability schools designation. And that's another, uh, designation from the state that, that comes along with, uh, Solution Tree, um, and the Marzano Group, uh, which have kind of combined forces in the last year or so. Um, but high reliability, high reliability schools designation, uh, really takes a close look at, um, where this, uh, the highly effective schools, uh, looks at your plans for action and obviously you have artifacts and, and data that support that these things are happening. Uh, you really have an increased look at the, the, the artifacts and the, um, the data that support that you're meeting up to this very specific set of criteria. Whereas with the highly effective schools accreditation process, there's kind of a focus on a few, a very important, um, set of criteria, uh, but, uh, the high reliability schools take some more global look to say, hey, in all areas of, of what schools are doing, um, they are meeting, meeting this, this level and standard. So that, that maintenance process also is kind of a springboard too. Okay, next step's being, uh, built as a higher liability school. And there's different levels of designation in that.
That's a, that's a big deal. Melissa, how many of our schools have attained this recognition, you know?
Two.
This is it? No, no other schools have done? Wow.
Yeah, we, we do have more, um, that will be applying in the future, you know, as they said, is we're really aligning our work and we're being focused on, and the work that we're doing. I think any of us will just apply today and get accredited, so.
That's a really big deal. You guys, the first two, only two. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Great job. Well, every, every two years, we, we go through the opportunity of having a legislative session, regular session. Then every odd year, every other year, we have the financial session or fiscal session. So this year it happens to be the regular session. So, uh, as I traveled to Plummerville this morning, I saw all these state representative tags and senator tags passing me as I was doing seventy-five. And, uh, they were headed to the session. So they'll begin, I guess tomorrow will be the inauguration of the governor and then we kick things off. So, um, looking forward to that. I, I'm the chair for AEA as far as the finance portion. There are three sections, governance, finance, and, and so I'm the chair for that, uh, again this time. So I will be keenly involved as you all are aware and want me to be, uh, continue to believe. So I should be there on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and every week. There are other superintendents here, maybe being there listening Thursday. Our focus is to make sure that we're a supporter. We're not going to give calls to, uh, be anything other than supportive. Add, you know, be advocates for our schools, but at the same time be resources and create relationships. There are a lot of new state reps and senators this year. So it's important that we're there. I believe in omnibus bills coming forward for education. That being said, history has been multiple small bills. In fact, a lot of legislators, when they're proposing bills, say this is a little bill that doesn't do a whole lot, Glenn. Oftentimes those little, little bills do a whole lot. But this expectation this year, prefiled bills have been at an all-time minimum and that is unusual since the vast majority of the people have had a lot of bills being turned. We've been dealing with, uh, potential bills since August of this year with some of our local reps and those haven't been filed yet. So the understanding is an omnibus bill is coming forward, which will be an all-inclusive educational bill. As soon as we see that, you'll know it. I'll try to be very active with you, communicating again through the session. I'm hopeful that the session will be productive and that education will be better at the end of it than it is today. I know that we have, uh, some significant needs. We can do better in lots of different ways. School choice is going to be on the forefront and we need to be a, a quality choice for parents. And I think that there are some alternatives to how we've done business since nineteen eighty-three with the academic standards of accreditation that I've visited with you about, and those standards haven't changed. I expect some of those standards will change or there may be a passing lane for people to get out and go past, uh, some of the old antiquated standards. But, uh, the session is coming and it'll be a lot of work. And I know you're actively engaged, each of you. Several of you have already asked, hey, can I go with you to Little Rock? And yes, anytime you want to go, love for you to go. There are lots of opportunities for you to be engaged as well. So thank you for what you do. If you have any questions, I know it's early, happy to answer. There may be a whole lot more dialogue later, uh, but it kicks off this week. Any of you have any comments about, uh, what you expect the session to be or?
Buckle up and see what happens. I mean, I don't know. It's going to be interesting.
It'll be interesting. But we'll be engaged, all of you. I know have been in the past. In regard to the superintendent symposium, Ms. Tisher and Dr. Smith will be attending this year. Tomorrow, I actually get recognized and, um, get to do a little speech, I guess, to the entire body about being the superintendent of the year and the expectations for the legislative season. And so I'll get to do that. But on Wednesday morning, we've invited Rodney, and I see Rodney in the back. Rodney, if you don't mind, you, we didn't set this up, but if you don't mind coming to the podium, you didn't ask to do this, probably don't want to, but, uh, Rodney has gathered a collection of business and industry leaders in our area. And we have a panel, I believe it was eight forty-five, nine forty-five roughly, and I'm going to introduce Rodney. Rodney's going to talk to, uh, the CFOs, CEOs and all of that that we're bringing and just have a real diverse conversation in front of superintendents about what schools need to. So do you give a little synopsis?
Good evening, Board, and thank you for your time. Uh, just a brief, um, overview, we're going to take some sectors of business. Um, we have a collection from Northwest Arkansas, from poultry, um, construction, from heavy equipment, um, also from transportation, logistics, all those different areas. And we're going to take that group to Little Rock and they will be, um, discussing with our superintendents, the needs for some of the change in education to more align with the business and industry needs and how we can effectively have their support, um, to speak in some of these legislative sessions, but to also help us as we redirect that here locally in our district. So I think that'll be a good trip to get started. Um, we've got a, a workforce board that met with us in December and so we've, um, targeted these folks, um, who are willing to give their time to help us in this endeavor. So looking forward to what they bring to the table.
Should be exciting. We'll have about two hundred and thirty or so superintendents in the room. It's going to be well attended.
Comments, questions or?
Thanks for doing it.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Rodney. So, see, that's Tuesday and Wednesday. I have double essay meeting, uh, that afternoon, triple A meeting that late evening and then early on Thursday and I should be returning Thursday evening. So it's a long, hard week, but, uh, it's an important week and Springdale will be front and center in a lot. And so I, quite frankly, we have you to thank for all of us doing. So thanks for all you do to help put us in a position to have, um, a mouthpiece and be an example for the state.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Trusten?
Yes, sir.
Um?
Okay.
Well, that brings us to, let's see. Kelly, come on in.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Cleveland. Um, I know, I know that we, earlier we recognized this as Board Appreciation Month, but I know I speak for many of us when I say, we appreciate you so much. Um, your jobs are hard and we understand that and we respect that. Thank you for your support and thank you for what you do to allow us to do our work. We couldn't ask for a better board. I just wanted to say thank you very much. Um, on the financials, we're halfway through the year and things are looking good. They're, we're on par for where I would expect us to be this time of year. Our revenue is about where we were this time last year and our expenses the same way. So, um, I mentioned last month it was kind of a boring report, but in the world of accounting, we kind of liked boring. So, um, things are looking good, but I'll be happy to try to answer any specific questions you might have.
So if there's no questions, um, there we go.
I'll make a motion to approve the December financials as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Emerson and a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the December financial statements as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you. Uh, next board, I would like to disclose two related party, uh, groups that requires, uh, approve, uh, excuse me, disclosure in an open board meeting. The first is Dimes Meat Market. Dimes Meat Market, you are all familiar with Dimes Meat Market. It's, uh, one of the co-owners of it is Kimberly Proctor and Kimberly works for us in a clerical position at one of our elementary schools. So we would like the opportunity to work with Dimes Meat Market in the event that it's in our best interest to do so. And then the second one that I have, and we could just do these together if that's okay with everyone, is Sassy Screen Prints. And Sassy Screen Prints is owned by Stephanie Custodio and Ms. Custodio is a substitute teacher for the district. And so, um, on the occasion that it's in our best interest to purchase from her company, we would like the opportunity to do so. So I would ask that the board consider approving these disclosures, related party disclosures.
I make a motion that we approve both related party, um...
Actually, it's a resolution.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve the resolution to approve the related party transaction.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Ramos to, um, approve the resolution for the related party transaction, the two of them. Any discussion about those? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Well, thank you, and Mr. White's up next.
Uh, I'll do the construction update first and I may need some, uh, photography lessons from you after seeing your report. Um, so Springdale High, they, they've put in a lot of, uh, of the steel structure for the roof section of the main gym. They're continuing to work on the brick, um, on the exterior of the, uh, of the building, on all sides really. Um, they've got a lot of, of the brick complete. This is a view of, of the, um, north side. So that, that is actually some of the lobby that's going to be joining into the academic wing. They, they've started that blockwork. You can, you can tell on, on the inside, that's a lot of the, the lobby interior walls. And that's, that's more of the, uh, the lobby. Um, they're getting ready to pour the, uh, the educational wing and start that blockwork at Springdale High. They have a lot more of the, the trusses that's going to be going into this project. Soon they're, they're flying those in, um, to get that completed. That's all at Springdale High. And I know those, those pictures don't really do it justice on what work they've got done there. When you're actually there walking around, you can tell, um, how big everything's going to be and, and the size of everything. So it's really going good. They've got a lot of supplies over in the, um, east parking lot on the east side of the football field. That parking lot is pretty much full of supplies. So, so they've got a lot on hand and they've got a lot done. So hopefully we keep good weather and, and keep that job moving forward. Um, at Central, this is, um, so that, that new block there, that's in between the existing locker rooms and the main gym. So that will be the auxiliary gym. Um, they're getting all of that, um, in place and, uh, so that, so they've got a lot of that, the blockwork done. They'll get ready and start the educational... They'll get ready and start the educational, the wings. That's the ramp going into the main office area, so we had to keep that existing elevation in the, what's the cafeteria now? Will become the library. So, that's how we made up the difference in elevation. They've got all the wings, the concrete poured for those wings, so they'll start laying block now. It's just a different view of the concrete. Southwest, all the concrete has been poured for the main building, so they've got that complete. That's just a view, that's on the east side of the building. So that'll be agri, will be in that wing. They have a lot of steel up over there, and they actually have more now than they did when we took these pictures last week. This is in the football locker room. They've got it insulated. A lot of the electric is going in, and so we should take possession of that a little sooner than we thought. And this is just another view of the whole project. And like I said, when you're driving by there, you can see it, you know, from the main road. So it is a big building. It's going to be really nice. So, George Elementary, we've got a page turn tomorrow with Core Architects. It's about 700 pages. We'll turn every page, go through all the systems for that project and get that complete so we can finalize that approval process. So that one's, it's moving forward now. Do you have any questions about those construction projects?
We haven't gotten to the pricing part of the George project yet.
No. We're still in the estimating phase. What we're doing now, we've got 100% drawings now, so we're going to go page by page. There's 700 pages of documents to go through. So we'll go through with my team and Core Architect to make sure we get every system that we want. So when we bid it out, we'll have true numbers, you know, and that way we won't have change orders after we get a GMP for the project. So tomorrow will be a big day to finalize that project.
Will you go through all 700 pages tomorrow?
Yeah, we should. We've got a whole, we've got my team and then their team, and we're just going to, we're just going to go through it.
Sounds like an exciting day.
Yep. So there's been a lot of prep. I've already had my leads for my HVAC, electrical, plumbing, my doors, have already looked at the plans and went through those sections. So we've got everything kind of summarized up. We've had a couple weeks to go through those 700 pages. So, pretty much tomorrow, we'll just be going through it with Core, documenting everything and getting in where it'll be bid properly. Okay, I've got one more thing. So the week before Christmas, you guys know we had some extremely cold weather, some windchills, really cold windchills. So, you know, we had 11 buildings that had damage, had frozen pipes. Some were very minimum. We had some that was a little more major. So, most of them didn't show up until Christmas Eve. About noon, Christmas Eve, they started thawing and busting. And the thing on these is, there's nothing that alerts you, so we had guys walk in the buildings. They had to walk every building, every classroom, because the pipes that feed the restrooms, the kitchens, the art rooms, they run all over the building. So you had to actually look in every room. So as we did that, you know, we would start finding these leaks and then having to repair them. So, we had about 1,100 hours of repairs that happened between December 22nd and January 2nd. We got all the pipes repaired. We've got all the sheet rock fixed. We've got pretty much all the ceilings repaired. Everything's repaired other than paint. So we're down to just needing to paint. So we're going to work that in whenever we don't have kids in the building and get those finished up. So a lot of this was caused by heating air units failing in the middle of the night, in the middle of the day, just, you know, which, we have about 5,500 heating air units district wide, so we always have some that will fail. They just failed at the worst time possible. And then some of the other issues why that happened is some of our buildings are just old. They're not built to today's standard, and, you know, the way the wind came in, it just got us. So, like I said, all the repairs have been done, other than painting, but that was a big process throughout the Christmas break.
And will we file the insurance claim?
Yes.
Have you met the standard for insurance claim?
Yeah, so I've been working on that at the, I think it's the end of last week, and then today, I've been working on the insurance claim, getting all that ready for our insurance adjusters. They're going to be here tomorrow to go and look. So what we do is anytime we have that happen, we take a lot of photos, get them on jump drives. I've got inventory from several of the schools that had material and furniture that was damaged, and so we've got a list of that. I've got it all in a spreadsheet, and we'll be giving that to the insurance adjusters tomorrow and stuff. You guys have any questions on that?
Have they seen any material changes as far as supply?
Um, on the.
Has it come down at all, and do we get any benefit if that does happen?
On the construction projects, we have seen certain items get better, you know, as far as being able to get them and get them here in our possession. And I think I'd said in the future meet, in the past meetings, you know, a lot of the stuff that had long delays on delivery dates, we ordered first. So a lot of this stuff, we already have here. We have it in warehouses around the town. Just so when we get ready for that product, we have it here. So, I will be ordering furniture for Central Junior High Phase 1 probably next week. That way we can get it, the order placed, and get it in their warehouse. Furniture still, depending on the furniture, six to eight months away. Some of it's quicker. They have quick ship items, which some of ours will fall under that. So, but we are seeing a little better delivery dates and stuff on certain things. Heating and air, we're still seeing really long lead times, and usually when they tell you it'll be here, it'll get bumped a couple more times. So, but, you know, in this page turn, a lot of times we add multiple bidders because we may want to go with a different brand just because of availability. But HVAC seems to be, and electrical seems to have long lead times still. But a lot of that, we've already ordered, you know. So we're trying to get ahead of it and ordering it before we actually need it, anticipating its long lead times. Okay.
Good evening. It's great to be here with you all at the first school board meeting of 2023. Springdale educators have come back refreshed and revived from our break and excited to be back in our classrooms with our students. We had a great day of professional development last Wednesday, and it was really nice to have that time to meet with our CTMs and reflect on last semester, plan for this upcoming semester, and set some goals so that we can make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our students. Obviously, it's School Board Appreciation Month, and we just want you all to know that we are so blessed, we feel it, we know it, that we are so blessed to have each of you all as members of our school board. I know that all of you have our students at the very center, the core of your work, and you guys are a huge part of what make our schools a better place, and that this is not just a job that takes a couple hours on a Tuesday night for you all, and that you put your whole heart into it. So we just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all for all that you do in serving so generously with your time for our kids and for us. So thank you, and Dr. Cleveland, thank you for going to session and advocating for us there too. We appreciate that. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to, are there any patrons here that would like to address the Board? I don't think anybody signed up, anybody? If not, that's going to bring us to our, we're going to retire to executive sessions for purposes of our annual evaluation of our superintendents.
Thank you.
To call the meeting back to order, someone would like to make a motion, I would entertain it.
I will make a motion to increase Dr. Cleveland's stipend from nineteen thousand five hundred to twenty five thousand for his annuity plan.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Emerson, a second from Mr. Ramos to increase Dr. Cleveland's stipend for his annual annuity from nineteen thousand five hundred dollars to twenty five thousand dollars. Is there any discussion about that? Oh, and to continuous contract, obviously. If there's no other discussion about that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Let's go watch some football.
Thank you.
Y'all have a safe trip to Littlerock.
Yep.